All right, want to welcome everybody, staff, and any members of the public that are here. We have been looking forward to meeting with the school board. I know that Rob probably wants to say a couple of things also, but want to thank everybody for being here. Look forward to the exchange of some ideas and the presentations that are going to follow. But because we need to handle this like a public meeting, I think we'll go ahead and call our part to order, and then I'll turn it over to Rob, and you guys can do the same. And so, city clerk, would you take your role, please? Called meeting in order.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Dallow?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay. Mr. Barron? Mr. Barron?
Yes.
I can do that for you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, here we go. Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Barron?
Here.
Ms. Boson?
Here.
Ms. Caldwell Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Ellsberg?
Here.
Ms. Langford?
Here.
Ms. Newcomb?
Since I've kind of already made a little introduction, I'll turn it over to you, and then hopefully we can get started with the presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would like to say a couple of things to get this started. First of all, I'm really appreciative of you and your council for taking the time to have this meeting, and really looking forward to the conversation and to hearing from our respective staffs on ways they're working. And I think there's every reason to believe this is the beginning of something that we can regularly do, which is, I think, something that both sides have had some interest in doing for a while. So, you know, I can't start without noting that today is the first day of school for Des Moines Public Schools, for almost all of our kids. And so, you know, I kind of want to note that, you know, as the board for this district, our responsibility is to kind of channel those public values and priorities into a mission to serve the students of a large and diverse and at-risk school district, and keep close watch on the administration's prosecution of that mission. Because this is public education in the 21st century, our teachers, our principals, our leaders are charged with providing first-rate education with third-rate funding. But mostly their charge is to love our students like their own and put their needs first day after day after day, and it's a very weighty responsibility. Since it's been some time since these bodies have met together, I wanted to update my friends on the council on what DNPS looks like today. So, I mentioned earlier, there's 32,000 kids that came in our doors today. About 60% of those kids are students of color. 25% of those kids are Latino. About 20% are African-American. 20% of our kids are English-language learners, which doesn't mean that 20% of our kids might speak a language other than English at home, because kids graduate out of that category. But 20% are English-language learners. 15% receive special education services, and three-quarters qualify for free and reduced-price lunches. And I wanted to bring up those statistics because those are things that maybe the last time we met, and I think it was maybe about eight years ago, I was not on the board at the time, those are reasons that people would cite not to send your children to Des Moines Public Schools. And the difference between then and now is, I think, though, you know, we're facing some headwinds in terms of civility and respect for diversity, we, in Des Moines, I think, value that diverse community. And now, someone choosing to enroll their child in Des Moines Public Schools enrolls their child in a district that speaks 200 different languages, and has students that hail from over 100 countries, but also a district where four and five students graduate from high school in four years, and that features two of our top-five high schools in the state on the AP Index. To put it another way, DNPS is a place where parents can enroll their children in top-flight educational programs like the IB World Curricula, and know that as their students are in that classroom getting that education, they're getting it alongside kids who have had a different life experience than their own. Our reality has some challenges, too, and so we, as a board, over the last couple of years, and especially going into this next year of our board year, have made some changes in how we do our duties and how we provide oversight over our district. And so this year, we'll receive two monitoring reports focused just on the district's work with students of color. We'll receive three on our district's progress on algebra, three more on our elementary reading, and two more reports on preschool. The point of those reports is really to direct our work and our thinking on the priority issues, but then also to direct the work of our administration. So, you know, in this environment, we kind of always have to be on the lookout for ways to share resources and ways that we can work together to lift our kids up, which is why I'm kind of excited about this meeting. And really, I look forward to the meeting after this, too, and the opportunities to continue to working together. So, thank you for the time to speak, and I look forward to the conversation at hand. Mayor?
I think we also look forward to the discussion. I know that all of us pretty much serve the same constituents, and they're expecting a great education, for sure, and from our side of it, they're expecting safe schools, and certainly those are a couple of the ways that we collaborate. But I think that we, as we serve these taxpayers and we serve these citizens, we have to figure out how to deliver them the best services possible. And I think that only through a collaborative discussion, an open discussion amongst ourselves and Polk County and everybody else that works in this area, can we get that done. And I think that the two ones that are most visible to the general public, certainly on a day-to-day basis for the school system in the city. So, I think it's going to be a great beginning this evening to talk about what we're doing now, and then hopefully we can move forward with a discussion amongst us all about maybe if there's other opportunities and ways that we can strengthen those collaborations that are already in existence, and look and see if there's some others that we can maybe spread into and work on. And I know Cindy and I have been working on some walkability issues and some others, but we'll talk about those a little bit later. Mr. Manager, I think I'll turn it over to you at this point, and maybe we can get started, although it looks like our first presenter, we're going to talk about SROs. But without further ado, I will turn it over to our city manager, Scott Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to be real brief. Just for you that may not know, the superintendent and I actually do meet regularly to discuss not only the topics you see in front of you, but other, more current items as they come about. And so, there's been this great start of a relationship, and I'm looking forward to hearing what other ideas the elected officials would like to see us pursue as administrators. You know, it's a good timing for me, as well, to hear these ideas, as we spent the full day with the council talking about strategic planning at the city. So, this will be a great opportunity to integrate these ideas and objectives that may include the Des Moines School District. So, I thank you for joining us in this venture, and know that the relationship has already been built, and so I'm just prepared to hear what initiatives you'd like to follow.
Hello. I want to just express some gratitude for Scott and Carl and their team for putting together, really leading the semblance of the presentations. This is a select group of maybe some of our most visible and most vibrant and ongoing collaborations, but as Scott said, we've, since Scott's been on board, we've had regular meetings, as does Carl Metzger and Bill Good. I think we stay in really good communication. I think that part of the relationship is very healthy. I've been in the school district for nine years now, but I've lived in the city for about 16 years. I love Des Moines. Many of the challenges that the city faces are the same as what the district faces, and it is important that we have a strong collaborative effort. There's a lot of sort of chicken-and-egg issues, that it's easy to point fingers one direction or the other, and none of those challenges will be solved by one entity alone. It really does need to be a collaborative effort. So, I'm appreciative of both my board and the council for spending some time together to get a better understanding of how we're currently collaborating, and Scott and I are both interested in hearing what future opportunities you all see in our future. So with that, we want to invite our first presenter up.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Kenneth Brown. I'm a sergeant with the Des Moines Police Department. I'm currently the supervisor of the School Resource Officers Unit, as we call them, the SROs, and I'm going to give you a quick presentation on what we do, what we have to offer, and some stats regarding my first year, which was last year. This is my second year, and some of the good things that I've seen since I've been on What is a School Resource Officer? There are many perceptions of what an SRO is. SROs truly have one of the most unique roles in the department. Our history. Many people believe that SROs are a recent trend, but history shows that SROs have been around for quite some time. Started in Flint, Michigan, 1950s. 1963, Bernard Gardmire termed the unit, or what we do, School Resource Officer. Purpose was to build relationships between the youth and law enforcement. Late 1960s, Police Liaison Officer Program began here in Des Moines. 1988, it was restructured and named the SRO Program. 1998, the SRO reintroduced officers to Des Moines Public Schools. 1999, federal grants became available for the SRO Program. Real quick, I would like to go back to 1998, when the program was introduced to Des Moines Public Schools. Currently, there are eight officers assigned. 18 years later, there are still eight officers assigned. That's one of the issues that, sort of an agony problem, is keeping numbers, getting more numbers to adequately support the schools in 2016. Des Moines Public Schools. There are 62 schools, five comprehensive high schools, six high schools. At each high school, there's one SRO officer. There are two middle school SROs to handle all the middle schools in the city. We also serve all the elementary schools and some of the private institutions in the city. One sergeant. Our coverage also includes some of the alternative schools such as Scavo, there was Cassidy, now is called Jesse Taylor, Future Pathways, McKee, Ruby Van Meter. There's a new school that's going to be introduced in the south side. It's called MAN. It would be an alternative school for high school students who are not in the Des Moines Public School system, and that would be another alternative program that's going to be added to the other alternative school list. All roles. There are pretty much three roles of the SRO. The first and most important is law enforcement. Being part of our patrol unit, SROs enforce all state and local laws. They also assist to promote a safe school environment. SROs act as informed counselors. They advise staff, students, and parents of many issues, personal and professionals. SROs also utilize, let me see, a collaborative effort with school professionals. SROs are encouraged to get in the classrooms and connect with the students by providing law-related education. Educating our youth on law-related topics is one of the best ways to bridge that gap between law enforcement and juveniles. Some of the roles that we share or that we provide, one's a guest speaker, informal counselor, and of course, law enforcement. Our goal's to bridge the gap between law enforcement and juveniles, and to encourage positive attitudes towards law enforcement. Also, to promote respect for people and property, reduce juvenile crime, give juveniles a realistic picture of local laws and the legal system, and to also teach crime prevention. As an informal counselor, we're involved in problem-solving, student conflicts, parent conflicts, drugs, suicide, domestic violence, bullying, pregnancy, and all other abuse-type Sometimes people don't have a grasp on some of the things that, as far as charges, the differences between juveniles and adults. Some of the options for juveniles, we can release with a warning. Diversion programs, such as Second Chance. Sometimes we can refer to Polk County, Rethinking Drinking is a program, PACE program, through the Polk County Attorney's Office. Mediation is big right now. Mediation has been a very big help with a lot of students who are having issues in school that don't necessarily equate to criminal issues. Mediation can come in and keep these kids from getting charges or charges that follow them out of high school. Delay referral to juvenile court service is another option for juveniles. Direct referral. With adults, we don't have too many options. We can be released with a warning, issued a misdemeanor summons, or we can be arrested. The stats that you see right here are all law enforcement contacts, which include arrests, citations, at all the high schools. The blue represents the year prior to me arriving. As you can see, I'm sorry, the red represents the stats of the year before I arrived. Blue represents the year that I did arrive, which was last year. As you can see some of these stats, African-Americans, male students, the previous year, there were 160 contacts with law enforcement. The year after that was a 101. African-American females, you can see the numbers, 96 the previous year. The year I arrived, 64. Let me add that when I first came on board, Chief Wingard and Assistant Chief Tunks, one of the directives that they were, that was given to me was, they wanted me to address the disproportionate numbers of arrests of African-American and Latino students in the high schools. So with their help, and along with some others I'm going to name later, we were able to come up with a quick strategy to deal with those numbers. And as you can see, the numbers not only went down for the African-American and Latino youth, but also white youth as well. Reducing the disproportionate law enforcement contact with minorities. A concerted effort was made to concentrate on criminal issues within schools and not minor school disciplinary infractions. Utilizing diversion programs as a second chance, and other restored-tojustice programs to prevent criminal records for minor offenses. Working in conjunction with juvenile court and school officials to develop effective measures to deal with disproportionality. Some of the key personnel that worked with me to initiate this strategy and institute this strategy, I got to give them big props. Corey Harris, Director of Middle Schools, Joy Lindquist, Harding Principal, Chad Jensen, Chief Juvenile Court Officer, Kim Carson and Kristi Burkhart, Polk County Juvenile Court Officers, and the Honorable Judge Colin Witt. They were very instrumental in coming together with me, working with me, to develop a strategy to deal with some of the issues pertaining to African-American youth and Latino youth in the high schools. Lastly, the SRO Unit's community policing at its best. The SRO Unit's community policing often called "school-based policing." The SRO Program works effectively with community members, both inside and outside the school boundaries, to promote a safe school and community environment. Thank you. That's my presentation.
I guess quickly, Kenneth, before you totally run out, we ought to see if there's any questions anybody has in reference to his presentation that either, clarifications that are needed, or anything else. I've got one.
Yes.
On the slide that you had that showed those statistics of the before and after you came?
Yes.
That looks quite a dramatic change. Does that African-American male, African-American female, does that include African-Americans and Latino, or is that just African-American?
Some of the Latino numbers, we think were included, the Asa Kishalanders, those issues over there. Also, one of the problems that we run into is some of the Latino students identify as Caucasian and not Latino. So, we run into that at times, and that sometimes that scores, skews the numbers a little bit. But overall, once we decided, once we decided that we were going to handle criminal offenses in high schools and not necessarily adolescent issues, the numbers were reduced dramatically. The schools were on board. They have their own disciplinary policy already, and they utilize that to assist with those numbers going down also.
Just an observation, the decrease is dramatic.
Thank you.
So, great work, except for the unknown males, it looks like they won a one.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything? Go ahead.
I have a quick question. I realize the information isn't on the slide, so you may not know. But on the top of your head, by any chance, do you know, you mentioned adolescent issues were a primary reason for the decrease. Could you give an example of that?
Well, years ago, I would say like the 90s, during the zero-tolerance era, which I was no fan of, I think it was a big problem with driving these numbers up. Kids were being arrested, for instance, for cussing at each other, or getting ready to fight in the hallways, or using profanity towards teachers, and that really skyrocketed the numbers. However, since we were on board with the school administrations, those type of issues can be handled by the school, and we let the school take control of those issues. Like I said, we want to deal with serious criminal issues in the schools. Our zero-tolerance is going to be towards, of course, weapons, assaults against staff, sexual assaults, obvious assaults where a perpetrator is just beating up someone who doesn't want to fight. Those type of instances where I should, law enforcement should be involved in.
Thank you, Sergeant Brown. At the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned, or you sort of argued the case for needing more officers in the schools and not. It seemed like you were implying that we didn't have necessarily the numbers that you would think are necessary to be able to sustain the efforts that we're doing. Could you talk a little bit more about that? Was that what you were implying?
You know, eight officers 18 years ago, when school enrollment was different, the numbers were different. The dynamics of kids coming in from other cities, moving in, was different. We got by with that. Ideally, right now, we need two officers in every high school, and we need more officers to deal with the middle schools in the city. So, to put one officer at a high school such as East, over 1,000 students, and expect them to really maintain some type of control in that school is asking quite a bit. Luckily, the school staff does a great job to assist. But ideally, right now, 2016, we need two officers in every high school, in my opinion.
Have officers that speak different languages, that can connect with those, you know, via demographic of students in Des Moines?
At this time, no. We do not have an SRO that speaks a second language currently in the unit.
Okay.
Yep. Just a couple of questions.
Yes.
You talked a little bit about MAN School, and maybe either you can answer it. How many students will be there? What grade?
Tim Schott is the expert on that one.
We'll have, we actually have a number of students that have been served there, but they were served in mobile units. So now, we've renovated the building over the course of the summer. The mobile units are gone. If you've looked at the property, it looks much better. So those same students, all high school-level students, will be served there, and there will be, I think the total will be somewhere around 80, 80 to 90 students being served there.
Is that nine, 9th through 12th grade?
9th through 12th grade.
Okay. And then just a budget question. What is our current budget for the eight officers that, and maybe that's a question for you, Scott, that we have that...
Pardon me. It's just eight plus me, so it's nine total. I was thinking, I would make that... No. Always.
Great work on the numbers. Big improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work that you do, and, you know, just caring, and that means a lot, and you can see it in how passionate you are, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Question. So, our next presentation's going to be about traffic and school crossings. Jennifer McCoy and Bill Good are going to present an overview of the traffic in school crossing, past accomplishments, and hopeful projects that are underway.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Jennifer McCoy, and I am the City of Des Moines City Traffic Engineer. And tonight, I'm going to be talking to you about traffic safety, transportation, just everything that we work with, kind of jointly with the school district on. In my nearly 20 years in traffic engineering, I've seen the importance of looking at traffic safety, circulation, and access issues at schools, and I really feel like we have a great partnership with the Des Moines Public School staff in really starting to address these issues and try and look at our different needs at our different schools. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some of the accomplishments that we've accomplished, and also about, a little more detail about how we work in that partnership, and then talk to you about some upcoming items specifically related to traffic, safety, transportation-related issues at the schools. So just to touch on a few, we have installed three raised pedestrian crosswalks, both at Hubba Elementary on Chamberlain and Center, and also at Wright Elementary at Southwest, on Southwest 14th. We've also conducted safety audits. I just highlighted a few. When we looked at safety audits, we're looking at school-related issues, parent circulation, traffic congestion, those types of issues. Some of the schools that we've worked with are Molton Learning Center, Calalan Middle School, Harding Middle School, Woodlawn Education Center. Another big one I wanted to highlight was working with the Transportation Bus Barn. There, we've really been working extensively to deal with neighborhood-related issues and other, and the transportation staff, and the outcome of that study was to put a traffic signal in, an MLK in Prospect. That will now provide an alternative way out of the bus barns, so that those buses will no longer have to travel through the neighborhood. They'll be able to access directly onto MLK, which will improve efficiencies, save gas, out-of-way travel, and also reduce that neighborhood impact. That signal is hopefully going to be installed next year. Another one of our big accomplishments is we have over 100 school flashers that we were able to communicate to a web-based communication system instead of our kind of old-school radio system. This allows us now to make real-time changes. If you have snow days, if you have early outs, different things that may affect, or you have program, and there's a need to maybe have the flashers later, because there's going to be a lot more children around the school, we can do more of that interactive piece, whereas the traditional system was a little bit more archaic, you had to kind of set it, and you were a little bit more limited. The school, the cities worked really well to include transportation-related items for school and city projects. There were several improvements that were done at Jackson Elementary as part of our Indianola Road Project, and most recently, we've worked with Bill Good and his group to plan a bus inset on the Walnut Street... The school, the cities worked really well to include transportation-related items for school and city projects. There were several improvements that were done at Jackson Elementary as part of our Indianola Road project. And most recently, we've worked with Bill Good and his group to plan a bus inset on the Walnut Street School. We found as DART moved off of Walnut Street, that was where the buses were. However, the roadway wasn't wide enough, and now the road is open to traffic all the time. So we really need to find a solution for the bus and the bus traffic there. One important piece I wanted to highlight is we've worked to obtain outside funding for school-related improvements, both using Safe Routes to School funding and also seeking traffic safety funds from the DOT to help to fund some of these different improvements. So I mentioned I want to talk a little bit about our City of Des Moines Traffic and Transportation, Des Moines Public Schools Staff Partnership. We work really well on coordinating on issues related to school-related traffic. We actually have a manual for school crossing control. It actually shows us how to lay out both school walking route maps, what types of devices are needed, where you need stop signs, where you need school pedestrian crossing signals, flashers, things like that. It also gives us guidelines for where crossing guards are needed based upon the number of students crossing, the speed and traffic volume, and the width of the roads these students are crossing. And so we really work to, through that process, to make sure that we're providing good traffic control for those kids getting back and forth from school. We did recently update our walking route maps for all the boundary changes that took place in 2015, because there was busing changes related to that, and some of that did impact some of our walking route maps and adjusted accordingly as the schools made those different changes. I did want to highlight a few key upcoming projects specifically related to transportation and traffic safety. One of them is a study that we're looking at, we're doing right now, actually. This is actually a really good example of our partnership with Des Moines Public Schools. We've been doing a study of three pedestrian overpasses that we have at Des Moines Public Schools at Howe, Windsor, and Park Avenue Elementary Schools. These bridges are at the end of their useful life, so something needs to be done, whether they get reconstructed or they get removed, and at-grade crossing improvements get put in instead. And we've been working hand-in-hand with Bill Good and his staff. We had, this last school year, we had met with the PTA at every single one of these schools, and also the local neighborhood, and did a series of meetings. Now, based upon that input, we're going to be coming back with kind of the proposal, again, going to those groups, and then bringing a final recommendation forward from that. Another one of the things I wanted to touch on is, as we know, the issues and the problems are always bigger than the resources. And so, really, the more things that are brought to us, either from parents or principals or even Des Moines school staff, it really outpaces the Des Moines traffic staff ability to address all of those issues. And so, really, looking for alternative ways to start getting some of this bigger list of items addressed using maybe outside consultants and things like that is something we've started to talk to Des Moines Public School staff about. That way, we can take more, move towards more of a proactive approach in addressing school traffic issues instead of a reactive approach, which is where we've been. Last few things I wanted to highlight were, most recently, we had a vacancy on our Traffic Safety Committee. The Traffic Safety Committee is a board that the City Council appoints several members to, but the Traffic Safety Committee does have a seat that the school board does go ahead and nominate a person. And this board really looks at everything safety-related in the city, and so it really is key to have that school representation on this board for when these different issues come up. Also, I think there'll be continued conversations on school crossing guards, both how to supply them, how to fund them, and those conversations will continue over this next year. And then I did want to mention kind of a newer initiative. I know the mayor touched on this a little bit before as well, the Step It Up Des Moines, which really has a goal to improve walkability. This is a combination of efforts from the city, Des Moines Public Schools, Iowa Public Health, the Healthy Estate Initiative, and the MPO. And their goals, kind of their first goal, top goal, is to improve walkability at three schools in Des Moines Public Schools. They have, they're considering East High School, Hyatt Middle School, and Carver Elementary as kind of a start to pilot those projects, to really look at walkability around the school and approaching the school. So that's another effort that'll be undertaken this next year. And with that, that wraps up what I have for you tonight. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
We'll open up for questions, but Cindy, do you want to follow up with any comment regarding the Step It Up initiative?
Give it a minute. Okay. Thank you, Frank. Yes, I did bring along the Step It Up DSM brochures. I have enough for all the council members and the board members, and possibly a few extras for people who might be interested. As it was mentioned, it is a collaborative between Des Moines Schools, the MPO, the city, and Healthy Estate Initiative, and Iowa Department of Public Health. And I'm just going to go ahead and make sure everybody here gets these brochures and leave them, leave any extras for anybody else, and let everybody read them.
Anybody have any questions? Jennifer is, and I think Bill's here also, if he either wants, Bill, any comments, or any questions you want to throw at Jennifer, kind of put her on the spot?
Well, I think Jennifer's well over 10 minutes, but I will say that she is an absolute pleasure, and council members, you need to be very proud of the fact of what Jennifer is accomplishing in your school district, in our city and school district. So I really appreciate her. We've got a great relationship, and representing our superintendent and school board, it's not just Jennifer, there's a lot of other city folks out there that we work with. So it's a great relationship, and I know personally, as a resident, and knowing that each one of our schools is in a neighborhood in Des Moines is kind of an important theme that we have.
I do want to say that, thank you for bringing up the Traffic Safety Committee, because that's, if we have a person to get on that committee, we can work on that, and I'll let my board know that we'll put that on a meeting agenda this month. So we'll see what we can do about that.
So I was just going to comment on the Howe and, sorry, not the Howe, but the Park Avenue and Howe overpasses. I really appreciated the opportunity that you provided for the community to have input. As we all know, especially those of us on the south side at the Park Avenue Overpass, that serves a multitude of purposes beyond just getting kids from school to home and vice versa. But I do think that the opportunity to have those conversations opened up a variety of avenues for people to have input, and I think there are a lot of people that are very interested in the topic. And so, the more that we can do to keep them engaged along the way as we're creating those solutions, I think the better the outcome will be for all of us. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you.
Bill Gray.
Thank you. I just want to comment, Jennifer, what a great job you did on that traffic signal down on ML King and Prospect. Some side benefits that we're going to incur from that is the fact we're going to be able to slow traffic down there. That's a kind of a high-speed area, going over a crest of a hill, so it's a condition for a lot of accidents to happen, so now we'll be able to control a little bit of that traffic. One of the studies also showed that now that the school buses can make a left turn to head south on ML King, there's probably over $5,000 a year in gasoline savings from not having to take a detour to go through the neighborhoods. And that is a third benefit, is that now the neighborhoods are going to be nice and quiet, they don't have the bus thundering through their neighborhoods trying to take a detour to go out and pick up the students. So what you did here is a magnificent start. The neighbors are excited, I know the bus drivers are excited, so what a great job, and I want to thank you.
All right, anybody have anything else?
Just a quick comment. Jennifer, we appreciate the job you do. Bill, I personally want to thank you for the work that you've done and being able to...
Personally worked with you on different projects. You've been a pleasure to work with, and I think that your staff and your board needs to know that. You know, you participated in the Southwest 9th revitalization. You were there every step of the way, you know, moving the class from the airport, coming up with a solution with that. So you've been a pleasure to work with, and I want to thank you personally for that.
All right, anything else? All right, I wanted to show you how well we're moving along. Jennifer started at 6:03, and it's now 6:16, so we're moving along sharply. Thank you, both Bill and Jennifer. Let's move on now to our Parks and Recreation Department collaboration with the schools. Ben Page, our Park and Recreation Director, and Jason Allen, our Student Activities and Community Education Coordinator for the Des Moines Public Schools have helped put this together, and I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, Ben Page, Parks and Recreation Director. Great partnerships, take great relationships, in my opinion. And I want to say the same thing you've already heard, but I'll add to the list of Bill Good's accomplishments tonight, being thanked. He's been a partner, he's been there from day one on all of our facility issues. Jason Allen, he's been tremendous to work with on all of our programming issues, and we couldn't be without remiss thanking Phil Rader. Our programs and our facilities, Nate Grade Marketing, and he does that with the schools. I want to thank those three before I begin. Also, beyond the staff interactions, what I thought was unique until I heard about the Traffic and Safety Committee was, we have a by ordinance school board member on our park board. Our park board is 15 members strong. Each of the mayor and council have two appointments. That gets us an even number of 14, and on your board, you place one, and right now, that's Heather Anderson. And we're lucky, we had Connie Boson on that role, but now she slid into a citizen role by War II, Councilman Bob Mahaffey before retired. So we're fortunate to have two great school officials on our board. I'd be remiss if I didn't start off with when I heard the superintendent talk about, and the chairman of the school board, the mayor, talk about being an all-inclusive community at the beginning of tonight's meeting. This is a program that the City Council has supported since 2008. It's very important to me and to my mission, I know it's important to all of you that are elected leaders. This is our subsidy program. This is something that I know that we want to have as a community, whether you're on the school board or the city council, to ensure that every individual in our community has access to our programs and our facilities regardless of their ability to pay. So this is a great program. I didn't list all the things we accomplished out of this, but if they can't pay, they come to us, and we subsidize programs for youth sports and facility rentals. And I see the registers here, so this is one of those programs that never catches a headline that we could use a little help putting the word out on. One of the easy ones, our longest-running tradition is sharing facilities, and I want to thank the school for that. Our programs wouldn't be there without sharing facilities, and it goes both ways. The city uses your facilities, your gymnasiums, your sports fields, your sports courts, and your pools. Believe it or not, we use your pools in the wintertime when ours are closed. We use youth programming in there, we do all kinds of things, adults as well. In return, we want to share our facilities as well. We share the award-winning James County Soccer Complex for you. All five high schools play there. Last year, we put new scoreboards in on the park and rec budget, but we put all five high school logos out there because we want them to feel that's their home. We also have the Berlin Wavelet Tennis Courts for your tennis program. You use our pools in the winter, I mean, in the summer. You have cross-country meets, and you use all of our golf courses for $1 a round for your students, which is unheard of. One of the things that Jason and I worked really hard in the last three years is this new youth sports program. We both had youth sports programs. The school had one, and the Park and Recreation Department had one. We came together, we said, it's foolish for both of us to have the same programs and going after the same participants. So we came together, we said, let's do one thing together on this one. Let's look at how we can serve our community better. We talked to the neighbors, we talked to the residents, the citizens, and we said, why are our numbers so low? It's because many of our parents work second and third shifts, sometimes second jobs, as we all know. The kids simply couldn't get to the practices, to the games. We did a new program three years ago, and we started with youth basketball. We said, we had 300 kids three years ago, we made all the kids sign up at their school, they practice at their school, and the weekends, they get a go-around, and recreated the synergy of the fun competitiveness about which side of town's better at what sport. Right now, we went from 300 in three years to 1,300. It has continued to grow. It was so successful that we decided we'd do soccer, flag football, and new this year volleyball. I want to thank the school board and for their use in the city council for this. Again, no one entity, if you see our logo, we've branded our youth sports districts with one logo now. It's not the city, it's not the school's logo, it's a combined logo. Another thing that started well before my time that I can't take credit for, but it's a great program, is our pass-and-play. Board member Boson brought this to the school, to the city parks department a long time ago. It's a simple incentive, there's a lot of things, but the one thing that we do for Parks and Recreation is every child in the Des Moines schools that has a 2.5 grade average and missed less than 10 days of school gets a free, single-season pool pass. Keeps them something to do and an incentive to keep their eye on the prize in the school. One of the best things I think we've done in a long time is, we had a retirement, and we recreated that job with an environmental education program supervisor. It's one of our most sought-after programs now, as you might imagine with the STEM push. We go to the schools. We take our programming to the schools to get the kids out into our parks. But one of the things I'm most proud of in the last year is, we all know how resources are tight, we've created virtual field trips. I don't know if you even know, any of you know about this, other than our two board members in the park board. What we've done is used a video confer scene to bring our parks to the schools. It's a really neat idea. What happens is, they can learn about native plants in our greenhouse, and then upon the completion of this, we've only tried it a couple of times, we bring plants to that classroom, let them have them to continue to care for them. We've also brought wild seed for butterfly gardens, as the mayor has a monarch pledge, we want to keep growing that, so the kids will take these home and do butterfly gardens in their backyard and continue to learn and experience this. Here's a great story as well. Three years ago, we saw the trend coming across the nation with having and trouble finding lifeguards. You probably saw our suburban friends not open pools on time, or close pools during the season because they didn't have enough staff. Being a pool lifeguard or a WSI, swim lesson instructor, is a difficult thing this day and age. A, our demographic, it's $100 for each certification, and many of our kids can't afford that. Also, it takes a huge time commitment, a whole weekend, sometimes even an entire week, to get your license depending on your availability. We partnered with the school system and said, if you can teach this as part of your curriculum, we will guarantee employment of every single Des Moines kid that passes the background test of the city and the drug screening. And it's been a wonderful, wonderful program. We can now probably say, we hire, we probably are, until somebody proves me wrong, the largest youth hiring agency in the city limits. 225 Des Moines kids worked for us last summer. We're proud of that. Last, not last, but one of our final slides is coming up here. Marketing and outreach, I want to thank board member Anderson. She saw that the school was doing great things in getting their programs out, and she saw what we were doing, and she brought us together with Phil Rader's office and said, I think there's a way you can collaborate further, and we've done that. Now we reach out together, the school board has a wonderful app, they push information out on, we use our TV channel, our news articles, and we use social media together to promote all of our programs. And even if it's not our program, if it's got anything close to what we do, we want to share your information too. One example, we've done this a few spots, but the one I want to say on most recently is, we're an old city. As our city continues to develop, it's not easy just to go develop new parkland, and I think this is a success, is Brody Park. Its primary use by day is a school. At night, it turns into a primary use of a park. We work together, we've built the park together, we maintain it together. Details are on the next slide here, you can see what we do. But it's been a wonderful, wonderful collaboration. We've done this up at Hoover at the North area with Northwest Pool, and there's probably other areas down the road we can look at how we have service gaps in our community for parks and trails. Last but not least, I think one of the most important things we do is food sourcing in our community. As we know our demographic, we really need to take care of these kids. One of the things people forget about with the school's great lunch program that happens during the school year, I want to make sure the public understands that just because the school ends, that the kids still do not need that service, they do. And we partnered together, we take our highest-used parks in the summertime, we bring your food program into the parks, we thank you for that. It serves a huge need in our community. That's just a few of the highlights that we do. That's the end of my presentation.
Anybody have any questions? Any comments?
I just had a comment. I just wanted to thank Ben and Phil for working together to get the information out to all the parents and community, and it's great how you partnered. And Ben does such a great job on a very little budget, so I appreciate all the work that you do.
Anybody? City council, members of the audience? All right? Got something? Chris? Go ahead.
Oh, did he leave? What's his name?
Ben.
Ben, you're okay. You don't have to come all the way back up. You can, okay.
We're going to keep him working.
Keep him on his toes. I just thought that the environmental program initiatives that you're rolling out at the schools are really neat, and I was just wondering, are there plans to expand to more schools?
We would love to, we'd entertain that. We have one person, and he's got night and weekend responsibilities, but whatever we can do to help, we want to sit down and discuss those things.
Good point, thank you. All right, let's move on. We've got, our next presentation is going to involve a discussion about DART. Elizabeth Pursuti and Tom Schott will present an overview, at least they've worked on it, and of DART services, and highlight its current partnership with the city and Des Moines Public Schools.
Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm Elizabeth Pursuti, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of DART, and I'd like to also acknowledge Amanda Wonkey, who's our Chief Engagement Communicator. Communications Officer, and Tim Sanderson, who's our Chief Operating Officer, both who work with the schools on behalf of DART. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Tim Schott, who is our partner at the schools and does a lot of work with us, and he is just a fantastic partner, and we really enjoy our relationship together. And then also, we do have the opportunity to work with the SROs sometimes as part of providing transportation, and they do a fantastic job of working with our staff to resolve issues. So I think there's a lot of collaboration in the room, and we appreciate being able to be here this evening. So, we all share a common purpose in making sure that people get to the services that they need within our community, and transportation is a key service, and the student population that we serve are very important to us. So today, I want to share just a little bit about DART and how we feel we connect in with the school system, as well as talk about our partnership, as well as future opportunities where we think there's room for additional collaboration. And so, 56% of our riders take DART to get to and from work, and an additional 12% use DART to get to school, and 10% for shopping. And so, it is, as we think about, you know, getting to employment and getting to school as critical needs in our community for our citizens, DART does play a key role in that. And 66% of our fixed route riders, and the majority of our ridership is in the city of Des Moines, work outside of the home, either full-time or part-time. 55% do not have a valid driver's license. 43% come from households with no working vehicle, and 76% come from households with pre-tax incomes of less than $35,000 a year. So, transportation is critical and is often a barrier as we try to move a lot of these individuals out of their status. And last year, we provided about 4.8 million rides, the majority of that being on our fixed route system, the others being on our other programs, our Vanpool program, and our paratransit service, which is our Americans with Disabilities Act service. This current year, or in 2016, DART's celebrating its 10th anniversary, and so 10 years ago, the leaders of our community got together and decided that regional transportation was important, and since then, we've had a lot of accomplishments. We've added bike racks on buses, we've added Sunday service, our shuttle downtown, which I know many of the schools take advantage of that for extracurricular activities. Our unlimited access program, which is our program that we work with businesses on to provide access to DART services, both the school is a partner in that program, as is the city of Des Moines. We've added hybrid electric vehicles to our fleet. We've implemented our DART Forward 2035 Plan, which is our long-range transit services plan for the region. We've constructed and were able to fund DART Central Station, which is our new transfer facility, providing a much more pleasant waiting environment for our customers and our students, which we've been able to, with the addition of this facility, that transfer aspect for students has been much less scary and much more pleasurable. We've expanded our service hours to better align with retail hours throughout the community and getting people to jobs, and then you can also track our buses in real time. And so, either using your phone or SMS text messaging, you can find out in real time when the next bus will get to a bus stop. And so, we've made a lot of improvements in service, and many of those improvements have helped our services with Des Moines Public Schools. So the purple lines are where we've at improved frequency, or having buses coming more often. The orange lines is where we've expanded service hours, so running earlier in the morning and later at night. And then the green lines are where we've added new and expanded routes. And there's two routes I'd really like to point out. One is our Route 60, which is a bidirectional loop route on University and Ingersoll that goes out, extends from downtown out to 42nd Street. Before, we did not have any service to Roosevelt High School on a regular basis. They were kind of random trips off of our university service. And so, we were able to, with the creation of this route, not only be able, not only were we able to serve Roosevelt High School, but we were also able to connect Roosevelt High School with Central Campus along with DMAC and Drake University. And I know there's some class sharing and mobility needs between those facilities, and so, we were able to accomplish that with that route, and it's very, very important to our network now and highly used by students. And then the second route I'd like to point out is our Route 5, which we restructured last August. And with that restructuring, we had gone, primarily used Franklin in, to come down to MLK and into downtown, but we were now, we changed that route to come down 31st Street and serve Merrill, Merrill Middle School, or no, Calhoun Middle School, sorry. And that was somewhere we had never had service before, and that service connects the neighborhoods both north and south that feed into that school, being able to provide access. So as we've been looking at making changes to service over the last five years, we've really taken the school district and their needs into account. And so, our partnership with Des Moines Public Schools started over 20 years ago, and there was a recognition that yellow school buses were following DART, or MTA buses at the time, around town, and how could we reduce the duplication of service, and how could we reduce the cost to the taxpayer? And so, the collaboration then started. And so, this is a map of our services in relationship to where schools are, and we, the only school that we do not have direct service to, either as a result of our regular service or the additional school service that we provide on, as part of our partnership, is Merrill on Grand Avenue. And so, the purple lines on this map are the additional service that we offer from, as part of our collaboration with the school district. And so, how do we partner? First, students who are eligible for busing, we provide deviated service off of our regular routes, from, to the schools or to neighborhoods, off of that regular service. And then we, the school also does put students on our regular service, and they can just show their ID. If, like, North High School is right on a regular route, and so if the student lives just off of North, they'll come out to the regular route and ride. And then we also, for all students with a student ID, and we started this part of the partnership about 10 years ago, we provide free rides after 4:00 p.m. to all Des Moines Public School students on weekdays, and then all day on holidays and weekends. And so, the benefits of the partnership, DART gets 3,500 rides a day from school students during the school year. There's a much better utilization of resources. We're able to use our buses more often, and they're able to reduce their bus needs overall. And then we're also providing students with life skills and how to use transit service and be part of the community. And so, as we look to the future, we think that there's, we've been working with Tim and his staff, and where we, where do we take this partnership as we look to the future? And so, we think there's an opportunity to revisit all of the services that DART offers, as well as what the school district offers. DART's made a lot of enhancements in our network over the last five years, and we've never taken a clean-slate approach to transportation service as it relates to DART and Des Moines Public Schools. And so, we think there's an opportunity to do that analysis and see if there's ways that maybe more students can take advantage of DART services that are already being offered. Collaborating with the school district, we do a lot of that, but as we look to school facilities in the future, and making sure that they're on the transit network, so that we're not faced with any situations where there isn't a facility without transit service. And then we, as we know, there's transportation barriers for a lot of the residents within the city of Des Moines, and we anticipate, or we think that there's probably those transportation barriers for students. And so, how do we maybe look to pilot or look at programs to reduce those barriers for students, given that many households do not have cars available to them? So if they don't have them for the parents, then they're not available for students. And there's some, been a lot of work across the country in regards to this, and think that there's maybe some opportunities here for us to do more. And then also, working with students and parents on training on how to use DART before they become eligible for DART services, and making that transition much smoother. We also, there's a lot of refugee students that depend on DART services, and just, how do we get them more acclimated, and how do we maybe provide that training as part of their school curriculum? And then, as we look to the future at DART on fair payment options and utilization of technology, how do we integrate with the school system and the technology that you're deploying to students to make those transactions occur and that we're not duplicating technology? So with that, I can take any questions.
Anybody have anything? Any questions, comments? Pristine?
Would be, if you haven't had an opportunity to take the bus, I would really encourage you to work with DART, and they'll make the arrangements. You can just drive down, and they'll work with you, but Route 60 is quite an experience, and I would encourage you to either take it early in the morning when the kids are going to school, or when they're coming home, because it has really been a very, very effective route. And I know I learned a lot and was really pleasantly surprised to see the huge number of students that were using it and how well it works, so I would encourage you to take advantage of that.
Just a question, Elizabeth. So do, and you can just educate me a little bit, because I don't know the answer to this. Do the students have to go to the Central Station, some of them, and get dropped off there from different schools, then catch another bus home, or how does that, or do they just catch one bus and it takes them to and from school?
The answer is, is it depends. There's a lot of, there's a lot of service that is specific to the neighborhoods, so off of Southwest Dyne, we'll deviate on either side of the road and then head over or off a floor to get over to Brody. But there are students that choose to go to different schools outside of their district or their neighborhood, and so, those would be opportunities where they would have to come down to DART Central Station and transfer.
So, just a follow-up question. Do you have any security issues when you get students from different high schools or different middle schools? I know in general, when I went to school, I might not have been the best person, and seeing kids from other schools might have caused trouble. Do we have that, and do we have a security in place for that?
Yeah, so when we opened DART Central Station, we wanted to make sure that we were the safest and securest facility we could be, and so we have a partnership with Des Moines PD, and they are there from 1:00 in the afternoon until we close in the evening, our busiest part of the day, to help minimize those disturbances. And on early out days, we sometimes have two officers there just to make sure that there's, we're maintaining order within the facility. We also work with the SROs if there's a disturbance on the bus after the students leave school, and work with to resolve those. One of the things that we did last year, we had typically, in years prior, had part-time, our newest bus operators on the school service. It was kind of the low man on the totem pole pick. We have reorganized our schedules and how the operators get work, so a lot of the schoolwork is now on our full-time, most senior operators' bids, and that has really reduced the amount of disturbances that we've had on-vehicle after school, during after-school transportation.
With the police officer, what funding is DART, are we a partner with that? Is, I mean, who's?
DART pays for that as part of our budget for operating DART Central Station.
I had a, I had just a quick question about the data. There's 3,500 students that ride each day, or is there 3,500 rides?
3,500 rides.
So like 1,700 and 1,700? How many people are on the yellow buses each day that you operate?
And though, some of those trips are not school trips, they're?
About 10,000.
About 10,000 kids ride the bus?
Yeah.
So, we're picking up 17% of them or something, and, yeah, that's, so more than 1 out of 3 kids ride the bus to school?
Well, a little less than 1 out of 3, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah, I just was wondering the scope of it.
But not all of those trips are related to getting to and from school. They do have the ability to use their pass after 4:00, and so some of that is for extracurricular activities or getting to jobs and throughout the community.
Elizabeth, you referenced on opportunities you're choosing attendance barriers. Did you have a, could you expand on that a little bit?
So one of the things that Tim and I have been talking about, in Minneapolis, they recently allowed access to all students as part of the public transit, allowed all access to all students to the transit system and paid for those passes. One of the things that Tim and I have talked about is whether, as a result of that opening that access, they've seen a significant reduction in attendance issues. And so, one of the things we've talked about piloting is maybe with a school with a lot of attendance issues, is opening up the service to those schools, to everyone in the school, to see whether that impacts attendance. So, so not all, for example, North High School, not all students are eligible for busing. You know, some of them live within a walk radius of the school, but transportation may still be a barrier from them, whether they choose not to walk, or they live too, maybe they perceive it to be too far of a walk or whatnot. And so, if, could we reduce that barrier by allowing them to ride DART to school, and would that impact attendance?
That's a good thought. Thank you.
I just had, I just had one comment. Elizabeth, I was happy to hear that you're thinking about the refugee and immigrants coming in, and I know that that's something that those families will need support, and I think it's a great, hopefully it'll be more of an outreach program that maybe already exists.
Yeah, and there was, today we had, there was, there's a Time Magazine article being done by, on a refugee family, and the reporter was with the student today, and today was their first day to ride DART, and so we were allowed for them to work with that student on the bus.
All right, Elizabeth, thank you very much, and appreciate the update on that collaboration between DART and the Des Moines Public School system. Let's now move on to developments and future growth. Phil Delafield is going to come up and talk about what's going on, and I think he's right behind me. Here we go.
Good evening, members of the school board, and Des Moines City Council. Phil Delafield is the Community Development Director for the city of Des Moines, and we have many opportunities to work together and closely with the school district. I'm going to highlight one of those most significant efforts, and I think one of the most far-reaching and perhaps most impactful for the future of the community, by reviewing with you our zoning, comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance update. So as many of you know, the zoning ordinance in the city of Des Moines is rather ancient, and we have, beginning a year ago and continuing this year and into next year, we began a process to rewrite our comprehensive plan, plan for the future. How should we grow, be thoughtful about our growth patterns, and then rework our development regulations so that we bring them more in line with where we believe the community should be. So, that process launched, and we called it- So that process launched, and we called it Plan DSM, and we have great leadership and this is one of the first areas of collaboration. The leadership, the steering committee that takes the leadership role for the comprehensive plan and for the zoning rewrite is shown above here and it is broad-based. I want to point out the mayor's participation, Scott Sanders, the city manager, and also Dr. Aheart as members of the steering committee. This also represents members of each of our city boards, the development community and many of the organizations that are impacted by the decisions that are made in this process. We prepared as part of that process an existing conditions workbook to measure where we are today. How do we improve on the future if we aren't sure where we are today? So in that, we also reflected on the schools and the schools' role in the community. Many people are surprised to learn that there are eight school districts that are actually in Des Moines proper. By and large, the biggest, of course, is the Des Moines School District, but we also have other school districts that are there. And we have some statistics that are shown there and this, we believe, helps the people, the citizens of Des Moines understand how our community is structured. Just a few other facts then, the stats that are included in this book. And we have this book available for you if you'd like to download it at the end of this presentation, there'll be a link and you can download a copy of it. So interesting school facts here and we show the schools and their locations and some imagery. We also, during this visioning process and working on the comprehensive plan, we became aware that through our public meetings, we scheduled four public meetings where we sought input from the community. We became very, very aware that the, there was a significant portion of the population that was not attending these meetings. So in an effort to fix that, we did a dedicated outreach that we tried to make contact with the groups. And included in that group are the school districts and so we brought the youth of tomorrow that will be living in Des Moines at the time we're passing the reins to that group to find out what they thought was important to the community. And so you see here some of those collaborative efforts. We actually gave presentations to some of the classes. We developed vision statements and I'm not going to read each of these to you, but I think they're important to understand, that we're talking about in Des Moines, we want to have walkable community with the diversity of housing choices, that functions with a complete transportation system and a resilient economy and that we protect sensitive areas. We will have, you know, compassion for all of our citizens. We have a sustainable government structure, cultural recreational activities that support the environment for global residents and of course the youth of the city as well, bringing them in and forward as we move forward. So the visioning process resulted in a number of goals and throughout this document, there are a huge number of goals that you will see represented in my slides this evening, a number of those goals that reference the schools. So continue and embrace the distinct character of Des Moines neighborhoods. You can see that we create these, each of these policies, land use 23, opportunities for mixture of land uses within neighborhoods that provide diverse housing products, recreational opportunities, schools. You'll see a series of these and I just want to bring your attention to them, that they are very much forming a part of the dialogue as we move forward and try to plan the city in the future. So just a few of these to touch on. Accessible public facilities, many of my peers here this evening talked about how we're sharing and making access. So we want to make sure that we continue to do those things and the comprehensive plan serves as a sort of umbrella document that helps the city make decisions in a strategic manner. So each of these goals will then be furthered in the zoning ordinance to try to further each of these goals. So just a few others to keep you aware of. Social equity was one of the most important pieces of this. Now, social equity is not a typical component of a comprehensive plan, but in our targeted outreach, it became a very large part of the dialogue. And it is very important to the community that social equity be taken into consideration. So we have created a whole chapter on social equity and with the result of a number of goals and policies that would then further social equity. So city services, projects, programs, events, encourage participation, a cross-section of the city's cultural diversity, those are the sorts of things that we would encourage through this plan. So in a summary sort of manner, the plan creates the direction for the future and it will dictate sort of a directed growth and redevelopment pattern where we would invest first where the infrastructure already exists, in a mixed-use type of environment as an alternative to just a straight-out commercial corridor that you might have seen in the suburban development phase of our community. We are focusing, as is highlighted, you'll all recall, I'm sure, the efforts on the Tomorrow Plan, which is a regional planning document. Plan DSM is our adoption and implementation of the Tomorrow Plan. So in the Tomorrow Plan, they highlighted a series of nodes and corridors where we have density increases that are in areas centered around high areas of livability. So neighborhood corridors, regional corridors, which are then connected by transit corridors. So nodes and corridors become our development pattern. So this is the future land use map. It's very colorful and it takes, it's a departure from where we have been in the past. I want to ask you that, it's impressive to see the different types of areas that are on here, but you can see in the very light areas, the dashed circles and they're of different size. So those would be the neighborhood nodes and the regional nodes that are within our community and then where the linking goes with transit corridors. So that we're providing a, an environment that not only is sustainable, but it provides access to transit and it provides economic opportunity for our citizens and it still protects and respects the character of the neighborhoods that we all live in and enjoy. I would be remiss if I didn't add a few other things. We work with the school district regularly. Every year, the school district has a number of projects that come through and Bill Good and Doug Odie and the staff in the Des Moines School District work with the permit center. We prioritize reviews and inspections in respect and recognition of the short construction window that you will have. We also work with a few of these items here, for example, the emergency shelter evaluation. We work with the school district to try to identify those facilities that would be most appropriate to serve as an emergency shelter. There are lots of requests for you in the school district to use your facilities after hours. Your facilities aren't always ideal for some of those uses. So it became apparent to both us and the school district that we needed to figure out a way to enable those to happen that are in appropriate places. So we collaborated on that and came up with a list of schools where certain events can happen. A church, for example, might be able to use a school facility in the off-hours. And then we're constantly looking for opportunities, and I mentioned the Dico site, we're exploring opportunities for redevelopment there. And those are the types of collaborative efforts that we currently have undertaken in the Community Development Department. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Anybody, some thoughts, questions? Council? Anything? Board?
The Dico one is interesting and not everyone may be savvy to that. Can you kind of just give a 30 second, what we're talking about, when we talk about the Dico site?
I'd be happy to. And the Dico site is an opportunity that is in the gateway of the downtown off of Martin Luther King Site. So as you cross Des Moines, I'm sorry, the Raccoon River on Flor Drive coming into the downtown, you see all the wonderful development that's happened, plus this ice wall. We've been working, we, city staff have been working for a very long time trying to solve the problems that are at that site. It has been mired in litigation for years. We now believe we're closing in on a solution and we are beginning to look at what that site represents as a future opportunity. Given its location, its proximity, it could be a real gem of a site. It could show what you can do with a distressed property and make it into something that would be a complement to the downtown and Grays Lake and those sorts of things. So we became aware that the school district had some interest in finding a location for a facility for shared sports events and there are other parties in the community that have similar interests. Our role has been to try to further the dialogue to see what might be possible. So for example, where Des Moines Menace may have an interest in having a stadium, there's been talk of opportunities for outdoor music venues and then of course what the school district needs for their facilities. So we are not at any conclusion at this point, but we are certainly looking at opportunities and we don't want to miss anything that might be possible.
Pristine?
Asking the question about the Dico site, if we could just follow up on that from the school's perspective, do you have anything else to add? I know city staff has been working on it, but if you're able to share any other information because I know that there have been meetings with Hubble who has all of the land down there and there's quite a lot of discussion going on about that development and what options may be available and obviously the Dico site is a very important part of that.
I'll offer and then I'll let my officers weigh in too. We've been in dialogue with the city for, gosh, I don't know, two years or so now. We don't have any firm plans for anything, but we feel it's important that, personally, I feel it's important that something happens with that property. Any, ever, any visitors to Des Moines, and recruiting staff for us is very important, attracting people in, the best people we can find around the country to serve our kids. And you fly into the airport and you come down Flor, which is a beautiful drive, and before you get to experience the amazing transformation of the entire downtown from the Capitol to the West Gateway, you see what looks like a war zone. And there's some thinking with, in working with the EPA and can never think of his name, but Maury, Maury Taylor, that maybe the only way to develop that site in any way that we all would find acceptable is to involve a public entity. And so as it is a possibility, we feel like we need to stay in the conversation because as Phil said, there might be only one window of opportunity to get that thing fixed. So let's keep all the parties at the table and make sure we're having the right discussions. And speaking of Hubble, we did have a large meeting with representatives from Grassley, Senator Grassley's office, Hubble was at the table and the city, of course, and the district and some others, RDG and some others, to tour that entire area from Southwest Ninth all the way to the edge of the Dico site to talk about how all those potential developments could intermingle and support one another.
Yeah. I would just offer that, you know, from our perspective, we're, just from individual board members' perspective, that the insecurity around the statewide penny funds going forward put me in a state of concern in terms of how those funds will be available for us to update and renovate buildings in the future. So we want to be, we always want to be cautious in terms of committing resources to a project as large as that and the terms would have to be, I think, appropriate for us to, for me to look kindly upon construction of a facility. But I agree with you all that it's a, from my understanding and what I've read and what I've heard, it's, it is an opportunity for us and it's absolutely an area that we would, as a lifelong Des Moines native, that I would want to see fixed up and it's a huge opportunity for us. Terry, do you want to?
I wasn't going to add anything on that topic, but I was going to bring up another thing that I think is really important relative to housing and housing development. And I think that there's just this natural tension that exists when it comes to housing developments, where they are and how ultimately they impact schools and our enrollment and our ability to plan for those new developments as they come online. And I appreciate the dialogue that we have, but I really think it's important that we sort of keep that front and center when it comes to how we better create those pathways, not only for those conversations, but making sure that we're not running counterintuitive, if you will, in terms of the needs for the city to develop, but also the needs for us to be able to stay on top of those developments and how they impact our schools and our students. So that's really important.
To that point, if I could add, that we are very respectful of that concern and we are also aware of those stresses within the community. So they are on the forefront of our thoughts. We do collaborate with the school district every time you bring in your consultant. Is it Goulden Evans that you hired to do, Phil?
When you do your population assessment and look forward, we collaborate with you to show you where our growth is going and where we see it. And this will be more directed growth than it has been in the past. If the zoning ordinance is adopted, this will say there are areas where we want certain things and there are other areas where we don't want certain things. And so development, you should look to our land use plan and find those areas where we do want these sorts of things. And to the point of housing in general and affordable housing in general, we've found through our public outreach that it wasn't, it wasn't the occupants of the housing that was causing the angst in the community. It became more the form of the building and that there are acceptable forms of buildings that can be supported by the community, that are respectful of the development patterns that have already occurred in the neighborhoods. So rather than a large warehouse-style apartment building, you might see more townhouse development or small, human-scale projects that are developed. And this document, the comprehensive plan, encourages that pattern of development.
Just to go back to the Dico site briefly, how would that affect your existing facilities that are there that need improvement? How would that affect your CIP budget in the future? For those existing facilities, would they be removed from some of the high schools that are there and just all go to the shared field? Or what would happen with those existing facilities?
Well, we really aren't that far along in the discussion to give a concrete answer to that. Certainly those are things that are in consideration. We have, you heard from Ben's presentation earlier, the number of kids that we're able collaboratively to pull into activities is really causing some strain on our, even our outdoor spaces to accommodate all those needs. It's an amazing problem to have and one that we hope we have to continue to struggle with. But a centralized athletic facility ultimately would allow us to provide one really high-quality venue, competition venue, that we would see most of the high school programs and middle school programs using for competition. And we don't, you know, we don't know exactly what that might look like. We wouldn't see getting rid of any current portfolio, but we wouldn't be maintaining those as competition sites any longer. And we also have one high school that doesn't have its own stadium and we would really like to find a home for the Roosevelt outdoor athletic places too. So it's a great question, Joe, and one we don't have good concrete answers to yet. We'll have to do more work on that as we understand better what the real viability of that site is.
Right. Just to follow up, being in meetings in the comprehensive plan that was put together for Lincoln High School and the overall view of what their sport would look like, you know, before they would go out and start fundraising and doing anything like that, I guess that would be a question that would need to be answered before.
Right. One thing that we've been, we've been working on is a comprehensive needs assessment at each of our comprehensive high schools and the middle schools to see what our actual needs are. And the more we get clear detail at each site, the clearer it is that not only is the state, existence, as Rob brought up, the statewide penny, an important factor in there, but also how much can we legitimately invest in multiple sites and do the right job so that all of our kids have equity of access to high-quality facilities that our suburban neighbors have? So, yeah, all, timing is everything with something like that and we're actively working on that.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else?
Overall?
Overall or anything? I mean, if this subject is done, I want to thank.
I do.
All right. But... But anything on this particular subject, or just in general?
Mine's in general.
All right. I'm going to let Phil sit down. Thanks, Phil.
I'll turn this thing off. I guess what I want to talk about a little bit is the reputation of the Des Moines schools. And as most of you know, I'm a very proud father of a 2010 graduate of East High School. He now works in a very specific position with the U.S. military. He wouldn't have been able to have the position he's got if he didn't achieve a very good education with the Des Moines schools. But as you all know, we hear all the horror stories. You don't want your students going to East or Roosevelt or any of the schools in Des Moines. You know, you want to go to Southeast Polk or Ankeny or whatever, and the younger people that are beginning their families aren't moving into the Des Moines area. And that's hurting us. So, I think that what we need to talk a little bit about is marketing of the Des Moines schools. My son would be a good example, except I don't think the U.S. government would allow him to do that because of the position he's in. But he's just one of thousands of success stories that have come out of our Des Moines schools. And one I'm going to point out, a young lady who graduated from Lincoln. At the age of 16, she was a sacker for Safeway. She worked her way up in that corporation to being second-in-command. She was an executive vice president until she retired. She's currently on the Board of Directors of Casey's. She's also on the Board of Directors of International Speedway Corporation, which most of you will recognize the name NASCAR. We need to find people like her that are willing to allow us to use her as a marketing tool for us, so that our young people and other people around central Iowa understand, you can receive an excellent education with the Des Moines schools, and here's what people have been able to achieve. She didn't go on to college. She used her high school education to achieve where she's at now. And I think we could all work together. We've heard from even Hubble Real Estate, Hubble Realty, Rick Tolikson, that we need to start doing marketing of Des Moines. I think this is part of the marketing that we need to do. But nothing can affect a city more negatively than the image that the schools are bad, and we all know that. We need to start finding these success stories, putting them out front, and saying, you know, here's what we have to offer.
Well, I think any one of us could probably speak to that, but I'll just offer that another, because you're exactly right. And I think you're, I agree with you on the marketing and the success stories that we have. I think that's sage advice, and I think well-served. The only other truth to this is that we're fighting battles 20 years ago. You know, a lot of the perception people have is something that happened to their school, or it's something they just heard about, you know, which is why I was very intentional in what I said at the beginning of this board meeting about the diversity that we have in this district. That is, in my mind, as a father of a three-and-a-half-year-old boy, that is a draw to me for my son's education, because my son will be educated in a building that will look like the world that he'll live in. And he'll learn as much or more value from the kids that he sits in that classroom with as he will from the instruction that he gets, with all respect due to the educators that are providing that instruction, so.
Tony?
I think it's, is it, Son?
Yes.
I think is the one point that I think we all could do better is promoting each other, and whether what you send out or what we send out has a combination. And I think that, to what Heather started with the parking rack, we need to do a lot more of that. We also have to recognize it's kind of the chicken and the egg. You've got to have the housing to draw some of the new people. We have older housing stock. A lot of people want those four-bedroom, two-car-attached garages. So, what do we do to do the new plan that you have, I think is going to address some of that? So, I think it all works hand in hand. And that's why I think that it was important for us to come together, so you could hear, too, what's going on in the schools. We have some phenomenal things. So, I say sometimes people really don't understand the true story of what's going on in our school buildings. And actually, what's going on is some tremendous educational opportunities for kids that they cannot get anywhere else in this metro area. So, I think if we can keep continuing to promote that, and it's vice versa, we need to also promote that people need to want to come in, into the city of Des Moines, and take over the older housing, and rehab it, and redo things to make it a stronger community for both the schools and the city.
Great points. Anything else?
I would just like to add, I agree with everything that everybody has said. We have great schools, we have great teachers, we have good staff. That's all great, but I do want to talk about some of the issues that are out there. And I, our middle school children are very vulnerable. Their bodies are changing, they're oftentimes hungry, there's just a lot going on. And I would ask that the school district take a look at having a late start on Wednesdays rather than an early out. And I ask that because last year, at May, before school was out, at the request of the neighborhoods, we gathered and we had over 125 people came to the meeting. Connie Boson was there, and we appreciate that, that Connie was there. We had lots of neighbors and residents there who said, there's something happening. When the, when school, when school is out at 1:00, these kids have no place to go. They're just out on the streets. Many of our suburban neighbors have a late start on Wednesday. Believe me, these kids are going to stay home and watch cartoons or stay in bed rather than come out and want to do some of the things that they're doing in the afternoon. The school staff has been absolutely amazing to work with. We've met during the summer, we were there this morning when school started. So, I just can't say enough good things about the school district. Our police department, I know that Sergeant Brown was at the meeting. We had a, an assembly at the middle school, and we had, I think we had 12, 15 police officers came. Our chief of police has given the school lots of extra attention, but all of that comes at a cost. And we are seeing that there are some things happening. So, I would just ask that you go back and take a look at what would happen if we had a late start. And I encourage you to work with the police department and get some of those numbers so you can see, and maybe you already have, but you will find that police calls go up on Wednesdays at 1:00. And I'm just wondering if you have any response or what your thoughts are.
I'd agree with you more about the middle schoolers. Yeah, they're, it's a challenging age regardless of demographic characteristics, but we have, you know, we certainly are aware of those challenges and something that we're more than happy to consider. I wanted to mention, too, that in regards to the start times, something that we're actively looking at is changing start times for all of our schools, to make our elementaries be the first schools to start, and middle schools start later, and high schools start even later. We haven't brought anything to the board yet, but they know that we're talking about that and hope to have something in place for, my goal would be for next year, but we can certainly work the discussion about a late start rather than an early release into that discussion as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Coleman.
Terry, Terry had something. Go ahead. Okay. I think this is still on. One other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I know we all understand and value the importance of early childhood education. And one of the things that we have been able to do in Des Moines Public Schools is to provide the universal preschool program through state dollars that are funded across the state of Iowa, where we serve thousands of students every single day. But we also know that a lot of those students are in home care. And oftentimes, that in-home care is a place where families are comfortable, parents have opportunities for a lot of flexibility. And I know that the city has been discussing over some period of time through the code compliance work, and now also at some point through the zoning work, the impact of code compliance changes and zoning changes on in-home childcare. And I think it's critically important that we all try to get our arms around this issue because we know that there are a large percentage of students in our district that, short of having in-home childcare, wouldn't have a childcare and a preschool experience at all. And we know how critically important that is for them to be able to start school on ready and on par with their peers. So, I think that's a really important issue that together, we can focus our attention on in ways that bring value and benefit to us both, but most importantly, create great opportunities and pathways for kids who are entering school on time and ready to do what they need to do in order to be successful. I know that we have had any number of opportunities to chat with staff about this, but this is something that I think if we don't do anything else as a result of these conversations, I think that that's something that we can all get our arms around and figure out how to make happen in a way that's a win-win for us both.
First, Terry, I think you'll be happy to know that today we spent the whole day together. We all, these guys all gathered at 8:00. I got there at 8:20. 7:30 was it? They didn't tell me when they were gathering for breakfast. I would have for sure been there for food. We spent the day planning, and you'll be pleased to know that one of the priorities that we came out of that, so every year we have a consultant we're working with, was the home occupation and in-home childcare regulation. Obviously, it's been on our work plan, but we assigned it to staff as one of the top priorities today. And I think all of us know that it is something that we have to deal with, you know, in part because we've kind of just, we have an ordinance in some place that a lot of people aren't following, so we have to update the ordinance no matter what. And exactly how it turns out, I think, will be important to a lot of kids and parents and grandparents, and we'll get that figured out, and I hope you continue to talk to us. I think there's certainly a change in our ordinance that we need. But, you know, it's complicated, because as soon as you start a home business, you have somebody that wants to do taxes at home, and they want to, you know, they want to do hairdressing at home. And all that is in our ordinance about how many customers and how many employees can somebody come to somebody's houses. So, it's going to take, kind of complicated to thread the needle of all that and help us deal with it. So, I think you'll see action on that pretty quickly. I had told the mayor that I wanted to talk, and I want to build off of what Connie and Skip in particular talked about, because we spend a lot of our time, and it was an impressive set of presentations about the services that are being delivered and the outcomes of those services. I think it's, I think it's really important that we stay focused in on that. But we also are responsible for the fiscal condition of our organizations as well. And so, we have to worry about the inputs, too. You know, where's our money coming from today and where is it going to go so that we can provide the services that we want to? And as Connie and Skip and others have said, we just don't have enough demand for people to move into our community. And the two reasons that people should want to move here is that they have a safe, great neighborhood and a great house and a great place to send their kids to school. And I think that the structural deficit, that's the language the city uses, our expenses are going up faster than the taxes, that we, you have the same problem. And I think it's worth both groups coming together to say, how can we, how can we address this from a marketing perspective? How can we, how can we have policies that are supportive of one another? You know, the city went through a year of heartache over tax abatement and how to deal with that. We want affordable housing for people in our community, but we don't want to overdo it in one neighborhood where it creates a burden on that neighborhood or on the school in that neighborhood. I think there's just a lot of things from a revenue standpoint, how we manage our tax base and what we can do to promote it in a way that increases demand for our houses that will be the, you know, could be one of the real signature achievements of this process. And I'd love for our key staff and the mayor and the chair to spend some time thinking about how do we put together a committee? I know several were involved in a school district committee a couple of years ago thinking about, you know, how do we do that marketing? What do we do from a communication standpoint? But also, what do we do about a policy standpoint to make this work? Because we're going to not, none of us will be as proud as we want to be until we have the resources that it's going to take to do what we know needs to be done. And that's all our tax base. So, I'd love to know that today was the beginning of several meetings, and I hope there's a chance for each of us to engage on some smaller committee or some activity in the coming weeks and months, and that we come back together and keep talking about these things, because we can't be successful without you, and you can't be successful without us. And we need to talk about that more.
Thank you. And I agree with all the comments that are being made here and the significance of us continuing to have dialogue and working together, because the schools have some great programs, some very successful programs, and I hope that we can expand on those programs. And one that comes to mind, that I visited the school last year, was I Have a Dream at Finley School. What an outstanding program that is. And if we could have that in a lot of the other elementary schools, just think of some of the real change that we would be able to make and the draw that that would be to those neighborhoods. But Terry, back to your comment about the early childhood. One of the other issues that we have, we do have several multifamily projects throughout the city, and they are at a disadvantage because they don't have access to the early childhood programs. And we've been successful with a couple of those programs by raising private dollars and working with United Way to get transportation to the early childhood programs. And we know that it's made an impact and it's made a difference. The one that I'm closest with is Hannah Walt School, but that cost us about $25,000 for one school year. And we've got to figure out, though, how to continue to do that, because it's now been, I think this will be the third year, we know those last two years, the positive impact it had with the students and how they were able to be integrated into the flow and not be disruptive in the classes. So, we've got to figure out how can we continually find the revenues and support to do that if we want to be successful with the early childhood.
All right. Thank you all for all the comments. And Rob, I think maybe you and I should spend some time putting our heads together. And I think maybe we had sort of a pre-meeting prior to this, and I know that Scott and Tom work together regularly, but I think maybe we ought to put together sort of a little working group. We'll get a couple of members off of our city council, and maybe you can find a couple of interested folks on the school board, and we can maybe get back together and over the next, maybe before the holidays, come back with some more ideas of what works, what doesn't, how is the best way to collaborate, and what are some fresh eyes expanding on some of the breakthrough presentations that we are seeing here tonight? But certainly, as we know, our constituents always expect more, and often they want to pay less. But it's a tough situation that we all are up against, but we want to have the most outstanding school system, we want to have the most outstanding city government. We're getting great accolades, not only in regionally, but around the state and around the country, for the overall image of our city. But I think that we need to work on a lot of the details, and certainly, as been pointed out here, coming up with worthwhile advances while keeping it fiscally responsible, and if we can find more and better ways to collaborate and use our dollars and get those dollars into the classroom, in your case. And certainly, we talk every single day and are setting priorities on how we can best use our dollars and provide the services that I know our citizens expect. And we would like to do that in collaboration with you. Rob, I'll turn it over to you, and then with any parting comments, and we'll then call our meetings adjourned.
Well, thank you, Mayor County. I think I heard, well, first I want to thank the staff that worked on those presentations and are doing a lot of the work. I remarked to a few of you before this meeting began that I think every single one of us knows how much and how closely our two entities work. It's nice to have a meeting like this to raise up. It's nice to have a meeting like this to raise up some of that work and then lay a foundation for where we go from here. I think there were a few very good ideas that were brought up in the midst of the presentations and then in the comments from members afterwards. And there are a few areas that, some I think more immediate than others, where we really want to start working. And to that end, my colleagues know I have never been afraid of a good ad hoc committee. And so, we can discuss this as a board, perhaps looking at my vice chair, perhaps even add a discussion item either to our first or second September meeting where we follow up on this meeting and have a little discussion on what we want to, where we want to go and who wants to be involved in, in what way. And I think roughly speaking, your timeline around December, January-ish, you know, maybe doing something again, whether it's the full-bodies meeting again or just some report back to, you know, as an agenda item on either one of our, you know, in a council meeting, you have a couple of people from this ad hoc committee come and speak and vice versa in a school board meeting, something like that where we can kind of check in and see how we're doing. I think that makes a lot of sense.
And Rob, let me just quick jump in here that, you know, we do workshops and it might be interesting to make a presentation there. And then I think our committee, whatever it is that we put together, might be more than willing to come and make a presentation at one of your meetings. So, I think it might be helpful.
I agree. So, I think there's, I think in that sense, this meeting was very successful because it, you know, accomplished everything we wanted to do and it only went 28 minutes over allotted time, which is like nothing for elected officials. So, good work, everyone. I only want to, see, there we go. There we go. I want to thank Diane and Deb for making sure that this thing actually happened and we knew where to sit and spelling our names right and everything. That was very, very helpful to us because I had some measure of anxiety in the lead-up to this because I've never done this before. So, I'm very appreciative of the staff that helped pull these things off. So, thank you very much.
All right. Just for our official close, could we have a motion do adjourn? All in favor say aye. Opposed? City Council sits adjourned.